To call this Celine City Council Meeting to order, if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, you have a revised, uh, well, excuse me. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Gearbaugh, Seo, Rhodes, McClellan, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal. I don't believe Treasurer Bennett is here this evening. City superintendent engineer Ruble is here, along with police chief Rennick and Parks and Rec director Scruggs, along with DPW director Fordice. If I'm missing any other member of city staff, I apologize. For the rest of you who are in attendance this evening, I would encourage you to sign up in the back to my left. You have a revised agenda in front of you. I believe all of the revisions are on the, on page two, the second half of the consent agenda, beginning with item C dash sixteen dash seventy-three and ending with C dash sixteen seventy-seven. It involves appointments to various boards and commissions, and I'm very pleased that the clerk assisted me to fill a number of vacancies between when this agenda was printed on Thursday afternoon and today. In addition to those changes to the consent agenda, we need to add the city's strategic plan as a third item under the discussion portion of our agenda, because of course we did not get to it at our work meeting. So unless there are additional changes, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Tahar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will dispense with that. So we move on to presentations. We have two this evening. The first is Wayne Clement's proclamation. I believe Penny and her husband and son are here. Do you want to come forward? Thanks for coming. Good to see you. How are you, young man? Good to see you. All right. Are we going to talk before this mic tonight? I'm loud, I can speak. Well, this is a real honor for me, but I have to tell you, my friends, it's also bittersweet. Here at the city of Celine, we were, we were really devastated when we lost Wayne Clement's earlier this year. He was a pretty iconic and a great Celinean who did so much for this community. And when he was ill, I had a conversation with council members Gearbaugh and Rhodes about drafting a proclamation in his honor. My one regret, Penny, is that we were not able to present it to your dad before his passing, but we thought it was important to draft one nevertheless and to present it to you and to your family. So I'm going to actually read this in its entirety. There are many people in the community who know of all of the tangible things Wayne did to make Celine a better place, but there's a lot who do not. And this, this proclamation does a nice job of summarizing his life, his involvement in our community. So, "City of Celine in honor of Wayne Clements," and it begins, "Whereas this posthumous proclamation is in honor of the memory of Wayne Clements, who served the Celine community for twenty-eight years on the Celine historic, on the Celine area Historic Society. And whereas, under Wayne Clements' leadership, the Historic Society was revitalized and a core group began working to preserve our past for our future. And whereas Wayne Clements was president of the board for twenty years and made sure that the depot, a long vacant building, was restored to its former glory, arranged for the acquisition, relocation, and restoration of the livery barn from the former Rizdon property on Michigan Avenue and Lewis Street, and was instrumental in the acquisition and dedication of the caboose and windmill to the city of Celine. And whereas Wayne led the effort to have the city of Celine acquire the Renshaw Farm, and under his leadership, the site became a well-known historic icon, celebrating all of the agricultural heritage, excuse me, of the Celine area. And whereas Wayne had a goal to preserve history and to educate people concerning historic buildings, and so he initiated a program of signage that identifies historic points of interest in downtown Celine. Now therefore, I, Ryan D. Marl, mayor of the city of Celine, on behalf of the city council and citizens of Celine, do hereby present this proclamation with our heartfelt sympathy to Wayne's family, and I set my hand and seal to this document on the first day of February 2016." My pleasure. On a personal note, Wayne was somebody who I considered a friend, a supporter, somebody who I very much enjoyed visiting with, and somebody whose perspective I always benefited from. So it is a great loss, but we cherish the memories, and his legacy of contributions will last for decades, years to come. So Penny, if you'd like to say anything, or if Wayne's son-in-law or grandson would like to say anything, we would welcome that.
Just quickly, I just wanted to thank you and the city council for honoring Dad, who would be so pleased. And I think that we can all say that the city of Celine would look a lot different today if there wasn't a partnership between Dad, the Historic Society, and the city. And thank you again so much.
Thank you. One more round of applause. And I do want to also note, we have a number of people from the Historic Society, both in the audience and on the dais who worked with Wayne, who joined me and expressed our condolences, but we're also honored to know him and happy to work with him. So thank you again. Okay, the second presentation this evening is Building Healthy Communities, and I believe our Parks and Rec director, Ms. Scruggs, is going to take the lead on this. So Ms. Scruggs, the floor is yours.
First of all, I'd like to say that I thoroughly enjoyed your dad and had a lot of opportunity to work with him as well. Building Healthy Communities. This is kind of an exciting opportunity that Celine has. We were approached by M. Parks, which is our state organization, to participate in Building Healthy Communities. This is a program that is through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. They, it's a little long and complicated, but they approached M. Parks and said, "We have $1.5 million and we want to do a program called Building Healthy Communities. M. Parks, we want you to manage this for us." So M. Parks then targeted different areas in Michigan, one being Washtenaw County. And, and they looked at Washtenaw County to figure out where we, where, who they should select, and Celine, Manchester, Ypsilanti Township, and Salem Township were all identified by M. Parks as areas that they felt like it would be wise to, to select them to run this Building Healthy Communities program. I take it as a compliment. You know, we've worked with M. Parks before with, with some other grants. Actually, we started one last year, the Come Out and Play, and we're continuing on this year, so that's helping to fund our Rec on the Go program. So I felt like they were confident in us that we could do the job and get the job done. So in any event, Building Healthy Communities, what it is, is they're trying to create environmental changes within local parks to increase physical activity levels of those living near those parks. That's what the ultimate goal of this, this program is. And the subgoals are to increase park usage by thirty percent, engage five hundred youth slash adults in physical activity, and to initiate smoke-free parks. So these are the, the goals of the Building Healthy Communities. And they have allocated $34,000 to each of our communities. Twenty-four thousand is for park enhancements, and that can be a range of different things. It can be for park equipment, park signage, developing parks, creating access to parks. And then the balance, the $10,000, is for programming. And the, I guess I'm going to get sidetracked a little bit, but the target population for this is for people living within a half a mile of each of these parks. So there are some caveats to, to how you can use this money. So the money needs to be used within, or for parks that are associated within neighborhoods within a half a mile of it. And actually, in Celine, we're, we're pretty close to a half a mile, whichever park we pick. The, we're required to initiate a couple of different programs. One is called Walk With Ease, which is a six-to-eight week program that's geared towards the senior population and for those people that have arthritis. And then the other, the other program that's required to initiate is Come Out and Play, which I kind of mentioned that before. We, we started that Come Out and Play program last summer with our Rec on the Go program, and we can, plan to continue that with Rec on the Go and also with our Kids Camp program this summer. And Come Out and Play has a lot of different components to it, but it's essentially, it's a way to try to get kids to be more physically active. This is all data-driven research. You know, we do a lot of like testing at the beginning of, of the program and then do some data points throughout the summer, and then at the end, we do some, some additional surveying and, and testing as well. The things that we thought about, my staff, and also, we did a presentation to the Parks Commission last Tuesday evening. We kind of, you know, told them about this as well, talked about some different ideas that we have and potential sites for, for spending that $24,000 would be in, in several parks, one being Teft Park, where a lot of people are walking, and Walking Two, Henny Field, which is a downtown area, walking area. It's a destination, it's a link to our Depot Trail and to the Brecken Library Trail. So again, we're using our non-motorized pathways to get people there and to create maybe some signage. And then another one is to work on trail, trailhead signage in, in conjunction with the Salt Springs Park and the Max Adler Trail, trying to drive people to the Max Adler Trail, creating some more awareness of that, potentially creating some brochures, some weatherproof brochure stations where people can grab these maps at, at the different parks, and also updating the wall at Key Bank, the, the non-motorized trail map that would, that would be up there. So we've, we've kind of, you know, spitballed a few different ideas and ways that we could actually meet the grant requirements. And I, I think, Ms. McClellan, you can testify that the, the Parks Commission was very enthusiastic about this and provided some really great feedback and some ideas that we brought from that regarding, like with, with signage and trying to get people to wayfind their, or find their way to the parks, maybe doing some branding, trying to make sure that we're consistent with, with the, the park signage. So in any event, that, that's essentially what the Building Healthy Communities grant is about. Again, this is something that we didn't apply for. They approached us, which, which is kind of a, kind of a big, you know, kudos to Celine and that we can do this, and it actually comes at a very good time because we're very much focused on non-motorized pathways, trying to get people into our parks, and I think this is a really, a nice win-win project. So I wanted to make sure that you were all aware of this, and if you have any feedback or ideas, we'd be happy to listen.
It's all very exciting. We appreciate you, you joining us this evening to, to share this information with us. What, what questions or comments do we have for our Parks and Rec director?
I'll just echo, we talked about the, at the Parks Commission meeting, that everybody was really excited, and Sunshine was there to talk about her work in the past and kind of, but I think it's going to be great, and we're really excited.
Very good. Mayor Fortem Rhodes, did you have a comment question for you?
I was just going to mention that I believe I may still have the desk for the original software that generated that map, that walking map that's on the side of Key Bank.
Perfect.
I'll look for that.
Yeah. I was going to mention, you, you mentioned Sunshine. Sunshine Lambert is kind of spearheading this, this grant. She was unable to be here, there's some banned competition at schools tonight, but she has been at our M. Parks conference, she attended a lot of the sessions that were for the different communities that have been targeted, and learned a lot more, and I'm, I'm regurgitating what she's, what, what we've, you know, been listening to and, and things that she's learned from, from all the sessions she's attended so far.
Very good. Additional questions or comments? Ms. Dillon?
I just have a question. You had mentioned on the thirty-four, on the programming side, the $10,000 for program, Kids Camps. What would that entail?
The $10,000 for programming, we have to initiate the Walking With Ease program.
Right.
And we have to initiate the Come Out and Play program.
Right.
And also, there has to be, you know, it would, it would cover any type of equipment needs, staffing needs, things to initiate those programs.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Scruggs, thank you again. Very exciting. Keep us in the loop. Let us know what we can do to be helpful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will present this information at your, at the mayor's.
Health and Wellness Forum at the end of next month.
Yes.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing further on Building Healthy Communities, we proceed then to the consent, or the consent agenda, the citizen comments on agenda items, excuse me. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? No citizen comments on agenda items, then we move to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve this agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Fortem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business, item sixteen dash fifty-eight, Lexipol Policies and Risk Management Resources. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January twenty-fifth, 2016 memo from Chief Rennick and to approve or not to approve the subscription with Lennox for Police Policy Procedure Management in the amount not to exceed $5,445, and to approve or not to approve the initial implementation in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Move to acknowledge and to approve and to approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Seo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Do you want to comment on your memo of January twenty-fifth? And there were a few outstanding items, Chief Rennick, that we discussed when this item was talked about at a work meeting, I think, two meetings back.
I, I think the original memo probably speaks for itself, plus the work session probably answered all those questions. I know at our, at our last session, there were a couple of questions that come up, and I'd like to address those.
Please.
Okay.
And then if I'm not mistaken, Chief, there may be an opportunity for Legal Counsel Smith to comment as well?
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you. Floor is yours.
The questions that came out were these daily training bulletins, what's the flavor that we're getting from the officers that are actually taking those on the street? You know, are they Burdumson, et cetera, et cetera, those type of questions. So I contacted Lexipol and I talked to John Fitzmanu, who is our representative here in the state of Michigan, and I'll, I'll just read it to you, it's a very short email that he wrote back. He says, "Actually, the daily training bulletins are well-received by officers for a number of reasons. First of all, they're short, approximately five minutes each, so it doesn't take too much time to complete. Second, multiple choice or true-faults questions, there are no incorrect answers that are recorded. In other words, if the officer does get it wrong, he is, he or she is then required to go back over the scenario and retake the, the quiz to make sure that he or she knows the correct answer." And then last, which is important for a lot of people, especially having been an instructor for many years, their open book. So they have their policy manual available to them, and so if they run into a problem, they can actually go into the policy and look exactly where in the policy it's being questioned and corrected. It says, "The training will help officers to understand and how to apply police principles to the practice that they are actually doing. It is a small daily investment that will protect them in the field. It's a peace of mind for the officer and the entire department." Unfortunately, in the state of Michigan, since they are so new, there are no agencies that are currently at that point where they're doing the training, daily training bulletins. So he directed me to a California department where they've been doing it for, I think he said, six or seven years now that they've had Lexipol in place. It was a lieutenant, and his comments were that at first, some of the officers weren't doing the daily, daily training bulletins. They made it not mandatory for their officers to do them. It was, you know, if you want to do them, do them, if you don't want to, you don't have to. He said it was a bit of a challenge initially. He said, "But after, after a time period," he said, "he noticed at roll call, officers beginning to talk about these daily training bulletins." And actually, he said, "It became fodder for their roll call. They were having these discussions back and forth." And he said, "By the time a year passed," he says, "everybody was doing the daily training bulletins. He's heard nothing negative about them." And he says, "It actually spurs conversation beyond the policy at the roll call." So he looked at him as very positive, and he, he said that repetitive, looking at a particular policy, especially the very, very important ones, the very high-risk ones, he says, "That will happen several times a year, several, actually even several times a month." And he says that those would certainly help the officer not to have any questions about those very, very important ones. In addition to that, by chance, I happened to be at a meeting with Mr. Seo up at Northfield Township, and unbeknownst to us, Northfield Township has been a member of Lexipol since early July. We, we were not made aware of that. And so I talked to Lieutenant Tim Green about the program, and I, would you, would you please have any comments about it? And he says, "Well, come onto my office, and he says, 'Let me show you the administrative side of it.'" And Mr. Seo says, "Mind if I tag along?" So he, he walked behind, and we went into his office, and he, he demonstrated how it works. I, I believe the number was fifty-two percent that they are done with. Out of the one hundred and eighty, they have fifty-two percent of the policies already done and ready to be published. And I'll, I, I think what I'll do is I'll let Mr. Seo speak for himself, because he asked Tim Green one question at the very end. Do you remember what it was?
Do you want to comment on that, Mr. Seo?
I asked him what his overall assessment was, and he was very pleased with the product that they provide, the service that they provide along with it, and the progress that they were making toward completing the rewrite of their policies.
I think he was even a little more enthusiastic. I think he said, "I love it." I think that's exactly what he said. And then I also did contact Mr. Smith from the attorney's office, because there was some question about, you know, whether our city attorney would have to vet these or not, and rather than me talk for Mr. Smith, I, I will let him talk.
Mr. Smith, the floor is yours.
Well, we would certainly want to look through them, but assuming that they're of the appropriate quality, that wouldn't take much time to do. I am working, or we are working with some other departments on revising policies, and that can take a lot of time, not only time from the city attorney's office, but it also takes police officers off the street to revise policies. And city attorney's office, that time may be somewhat fungible. There are lots of us, and we're looking for things to do, but you have a limited number of officers, and they, taking them off the street takes them away from the task that you would rather that they be performing, rather than writing policies. So in our view, what I told the chief, you're better leaving the policies to the experts. It's somewhat akin to what we do when we codify a code of ordinances and engage a company like Municipal Code Corporation to go through that. Can the city attorney's office do it? Sure. But it's a lot more efficient to have somebody do it who does these for communities or departments throughout the country.
And I guess one last comment is, in the, in the proposal, there's two, there's two dollar figures that are, are there. One is for the actual subscription rate on a yearly basis. That's for the daily training bulletins, getting the policies put in place, but not implementing them. The second monies that are in there is for the implementation. Now, Northfield Township chose not to do the implementation, so they are doing this all on their own. The city of Midland chose not to do the implementation, they're doing it on their own. The city of Jackson did choose to, to do the full implementation, and so they're having Lexipol do it. Lexipol, the, the last bit of information is Lexipol did say that it is a, kind of like a pick-and-choose type scenario. If you want help maybe on the, the high-risk ones, he says, "We can help you on those. If, if, if on some of the lesser ones, you don't think you need our help, you don't have to." And he said, "So would $10,000 be enough?" He says, "I really can't say at this point." He says, "The possibility certainly exists, but our rate is $135 to $150 per hour, and that's the same for everybody that does this." So if we used $100 worth of their service, you know, you're looking, you're looking at $15,000.
So to be, to be clear on this, there's, there's the possibility then that this is approved, you would be coming back to us requesting additional funds?
And I think that until we get into it, you know, after seeing the ease in which Tim Green was able to work with these policies, I don't know that we're going to need them to do the implementation. But I don't want to tell you we're not, because I, until we get into it, I don't know. And so, excuse me. And then to answer your question directly, yes, I think at some point, we may have to come back to you if in fact, we start getting in the middle of this and discover that we were going to need Lexipol's help. Or at that point, we certainly may, you know, contact the city attorney's office if, if it's something that maybe they might be able to do for a lesser amount. And of course, I think that would all have to be looked at.
But it would, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Rennick, there's a distinct possibility that throughout this process, whether we, whether you, excuse me, decide to engage with Lexipol robustly, or whether you choose something less, for lack of a better way to articulate it, that there's going to be opportunity for you and some of your subordinates and colleagues within the department to draft and vet some policies. Is that correct?
I, I don't know that draft would be the right word to, to review.
Okay.
Because they're going to supply the policies, and then we just review them. Some of them that, that Tim showed us, you know, it's just a matter of switching the word "any department" and put your police department name in there, and that's all you need to do to it. Other ones, there may be some, some stuff within the paragraph that needs to be changed, and of course, those would be the ones that I think would, would be more needed to be looked at. And yes, I, I believe, you know, sergeants, the officers, dispatchers, especially the ones that the policy affects most, would certainly be the ones to take a good look at.
So regardless of how we utilize Lexipol, we're not talking about officers or anyone within the department drafting policies, it's really just vetting and reviewing.
That's correct.
Fair enough. Anything else, Chief Rennick?
I think that's it, unless there's questions.
Anything else? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, there'll probably be some need to customize these policies, because the practice in Washtenaw County is different than it is in other counties in Michigan, and because the Celine Police Department has some unique ways of doing things that will be different than other police departments. So that's where the implementation comes in, that it will require some customization to meet the circumstances, the procedures, the policies, the practices of this department, Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department, State Police, and so forth, as we interact with those other agencies.
And I guess that brings up one, one more response. The fifteen or eighteen policies that I have put in place since being here, they're in electronic format, and that, there's no charge to send those to Lexipol and have those formatted into Lexi- Lexipol format. Those would be able to be done immediately. And so the, the current ones that we have in place would, would be in their format and ready to go almost instantaneously.
What's the, what's their policy? What's their timeframe on that? Policies that are updated or drafted at beginning when? January 2015, January 2016? You get what I'm saying?
No, I guess I'm not understanding.
So the policies that you have reviewed, rewritten, and customized since your tenure began in the summer of 2012, they'll essentially take those and, and adopt them?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, it's not based on a particular date?
No, it's not based on a particular date.
Just when your tenure began?
Right.
And they would use that same standard for other departments?
Yes.
Questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, was that, that all you had, sir? Excellent, okay. Let's start with Ms. McClellan and move to Mr. Gearbaugh.
So you're saying that the implementation of those custom policies are the, because I think we talked at the work meeting about how there's kind of generalized ones, and then there's ones that are specific for Celine. So they're going to just look at the specific ones? When we were, when?
The policies that are currently in place, the, the ones that have been done since I've been here, those will just be sent to them in electronic format, and then they will be reformatted into Lexipol format.
Okay.
There really won't be any changes to those. And if you remember from John Hess's report, he was very And if you remember from John Hess's report, he was very pleased with those policies. He, he feels that those were very well-written and very easy to follow. And so we won't really have to do any work with those. And, and we wouldn't have to do any work with those right now, just staying with what we have, because those are already brand-new, been reviewed, et cetera. It's the ones that haven't been done. Those are the ones that they're going to provide their, their policies. And then we need to read those over, make any changes that are specific to Celine, re-submit them. And, and I guess, maybe I need to point this out as well. There's little buttons on top of each paragraph which says, okay to customize, okay to customize, don't touch this section.
Okay.
It's the section that, you know, this is law, you can't touch this section and it won't let you.
Okay. Anything else, Councilman?
That's it for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Gierbach, did you have some comments or questions?
Um, just, no, I'm glad you explained that because that was my wondering how we were going to handle putting in the new policies in place because I knew there'd be a lot of those. When you'd mentioned Northfield Township, which I know they've had their own concerns, and mentioned that they've been working on it since July, and what are the percentage you had? When do they anticipate wrapping theirs up? Do they see it being another year, two years? I'm just looking at a timeframe for us in terms of our overall implementation.
Yeah, this isn't going to be something that happens overnight. I would be lying to you if I told you that. They're, they're anticipating, you know, another four or five months probably to get it done. Jackson, they told them even with LexiPol doing the implementation, eight to 10 months.
Okay.
From the time they actually start it until they finish it. I, I would guess that we would probably be in the same boat. Fortunately, we, you know, we, we do have some very, very talented people who will be able to maybe punch a few of these out a week. I mean, we may be able to do it much faster. But I think, and I don't think he mentioned it to me, but I think Tim Green is the only one reviewing the policy, so it's his job to do that. And of course, he has other responsibilities as well, so this isn't really necessarily a priority. It, it just gets done when he has the opportunity.
So realistic, a 12-month period for us?
Yeah, I would say 12 months would be comfortable. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Portem Rhodes?
Two questions. The daily training bulletins, are they in fact daily or are they just titled that? And if they are daily, are they five or seven times a week?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. They are actually daily, so if an officer takes a two-week vacation, he comes back to 14 of them. And that's because everybody needs to be on the same page with every policy. And so if you take a day off, you're going to have two when you come back. If you take two weeks off, you're going to have 15. But as I stated earlier, they're five to seven minutes. Realizing that a person goes on vacation, he might have to spend an hour to catch up. It's not overburdened.
Are you going to go on vacation with him?
Yeah. And, and I'm glad it's, technically, no, no, technically, there's an app for your, for your iPhone and your Android, and you can download them and do that same thing on your phone. Absolutely.
And then my final question was, are we committing to an ongoing cost with this organization once this initial implementation period is set up?
That is my recommendation. However, if, you know, financial trouble strikes and unable to continue the subscription, the policies are yours once you have them and you're done with them. They're yours, they're in a format that you can continue to change if need be. I, I think the whole purpose for going with LexiPol is that, daily training bulletin and that ongoing stuff, I think that's the important part here.
And what would that cost me if we elected to do the ongoing support?
It's about $5,100 a year after that.
Okay. Thank you.
But to follow up on Mayor Portem Rhodes's question, city council, city staff can opt out at any time?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And then also to follow up on a, on a comment that he made. So an officer takes two weeks vacation and comes back and is essentially, these are my words, not yours, is inundated with, with training videos. I think the training videos are important, don't get me wrong, but I hope that our approach isn't so rigid that that officer has to take the first hour, hour and a half, two hours of his, his or her shift to complete the video, or to complete the training videos when there are some other more pressing issues that need to be dealt with.
Right. And I, and I guess I want to make sure that we correct that, that they're not videos. The, the daily training bulletins aren't videos. They're scenarios that they read, there's a, then a policy that's connected with it, and then there's a test. So there really isn't, there really aren't videos attached to these daily training bullet signs.
So it's sort of like a PowerPoint?
Yes, it's almost like a PowerPoint. And I guess to answer your question more fully, there would be some type of a policy in place or a guideline in place that says if you, you know, you take a week off, you have X number of days in which to finish that.
Okay.
What, what we don't want to happen is for somebody not to do it.
Sure.
And then of course, get into a situation and they, they certainly would have the excuse saying, I never read that, I don't know.
Right.
So we don't want that. So we, we would have them get it done as quickly as possible.
Okay. Councilwoman Tahr?
Yes, thank you. A question that I have that hasn't been answered already is about the ongoing cost, the subscription cost. As I understood it at the work meeting, also included not only the training bulletins, but also updates as laws change, as case law changes, as legislation changed, that, that we would be advised that changes to our policy were also recommended or required?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that, I'll just say that.
By being a part of LexiPol, you automatically get those. And they're, they're sent in the form of an email to the administrator. Apparently, the one thing I did find out is that it doesn't automatically change the policy. You read the email, then you send the policy back and they change it. And then immediately, one of the daily training bullets will come out, will be about that policy and the change. So the officers aren't working off the old policy from just two days ago. They'll be working off the new one.
Okay. And all of that is included in the subscription?
Yes, that's all included.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all, Councilwoman Tahr?
For now, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Dillon?
Yes, thank you. Approximately how many policies does Celine have?
Hmm, that's a good question. We probably have 75 to 100. I would guess that's probably about right.
That are Celine-specific or total?
Well, when you say Celine-specific, there's, there's, there's model policies that were looked at and they were modeled after. Celine-specific may be just put the Celine spin on it. Doesn't mean that, as an example for pursuits, I'll just use that one as an example. There's some agencies that don't allow pursuits at all. Ours may allow to pursue to the city border, but not beyond. Other ones may say you can pursue for this, but you can't pursue for that. And so that kind of stuff, when they send their pursuit policy, that will be incorporated into the new pursuit policy as well. So that won't change. It's just, once that policy is given to us, we will add the Celine part to it.
And approximately, how often are policies updated?
Well.
Or no change in case law? I mean, is that the only thing that's really going to change them?
Well, yes. I mean, case law will change it. Certainly, new laws that are passed could change it. I, you know, the medical marijuana law is, is an example, didn't exist 10 years ago. Those kind of things had to be incorporated into your drug policies and that kind of stuff. And if, you know, Michigan, for whatever reason, decides to legalize marijuana, that would certainly change that one again.
Changes in equipment, changes in best practices.
Sure.
There are a lot of things that will change policies.
Okay. And then I just, on our end, who's going to be reviewing policies? Would it be you? Is it a team? Is it a collective effort? Is it just, you're just delegating to individuals within the department?
Well, certainly ultimately, I'm responsible for it, so I'm going to put the final hand upon it, of course. But for those policies that are able to be done by somebody that's the supervisor, or as an example, as a dispatcher, because it really involves dispatch people, I'd certainly be happy to let them take a look at it and make suggestions. Absolutely.
And then just back to the daily training. So it's mandatory that the officers do it? Is that correct?
That would be a department rule. That, it is not mandatory by?
No, not from LexiPol, but for Celine, you would make it, it would be mandatory?
My, my direction would be that, yes, that those would be mandatory.
Okay. And then there was a comment that said that incorrect answers, no incorrect answers are recorded. So is there any recording? Is it just that, yes, they completed that day's training? Is that?
In other words, and we'll just, since we talked about it, let, let, assume that we said you can't chase people, period. And the, the policy would come up, you'd read a scenario about it, and it said, you are now chasing this vehicle, you can do this, and you answered it incorrectly. It would say that you have the wrong answer, please refer back to this section, you'd have to take it again. And if you got it wrong again, you, they would keep referring you back until you answered it correctly. Once you've answered it correctly, then it shows that you have completed the training. So a daily training bulletin for Janet Dillon on March 21st, 2016, five minutes worth of training and it would be automatically documented. It wouldn't show up until you passed the written exam.
Okay.
Anything further, Ms. Dillon?
No, thank you very much.
Councilman Seo?
I talked at length at the, at the work session when we first addressed the whole LexiPol issue for a number of reasons that I thought it was a wise thing to do. And I still feel that way, especially in light of having reviewed it with Lieutenant Green up at Northfield Township on, I think it was last Thursday. Seeing it in, in light, on the screen there and live and in person and hearing Tim's enthusiasm for it, certainly made me a believer. I'm familiar with LexiPol products, I'm familiar with the whole agony and ecstasy of writing policy. And, and I think that it's, it's time and money better spent to have somebody else do it. Like Mr. Smith said, you engage the experts. We don't, we don't write our own ordinance books. There's a lot of things we don't do ourselves that we purchase or buy the service to make us a better police department. And I think this fits right in there with that same category.
Thank you, Councilmember Seo. You're probably the first person in recorded history to ever describe the rewriting of policy as ecstasy. I want to note that for the Deas this evening. Thank you for those comments. Chief Rennick, do you have anything else you'd like to, to say this evening?
Just that I would highly recommend that the council pass this.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Additional comments from staff or legal counsel? No? How about discussion? Ms. Tahr, please.
Um, yes. I, I'll start out by saying, well, first of all, I also support making this, engaging this service. And, and I have a couple of reasons. From my own experience in my professional life and also my volunteer life, I have, I too have experienced the agony and ecstasy of policy writing. And from my experience, I can say with complete confidence that there's really, there are really two, two things going on when you, when you formulate policy. One is knowing what the policy needs to be. And the other, which is quite, quite different, already alluded to by Mr. Smith and Mr. Seo, is the actual drafting of the text. And I've received some comments from members of the community about this, one of which included a comment, well, the chief, this is the chief's job, he should just be knocking out those policies even if it means burning the midnight oil. And, and I, I understand where that comment came from, but I disagree with it. I think that if, if the chief and the members of the department are burning midnight oil, it should be on determining what should be in the policy and not on wordsmithing. So I agree with Mr. Seo that I think this is, this is a good use of, of our funds. And the other, so that's my, my chief reason. I believe that the, in addition, the value of the product and the subscription is ongoing updates to policy and also the training aspect.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Additional comments?
I just wanted to bring up that we talked about the work session that there, because I know there was some community sentiment that John Hess had worked for them and, you know, kind of wasn't sure whether we had known about that, you know. So, but there's no one else in Michigan or actually in the country, is that correct, chief, that, that does this service?
There's no one else that I'm aware of that provides this service.
Okay.
And chief, I apologize, but one more time for the record, can, because I know what the truth is, I know that you know what the truth is, can we make it crystal clear to, to council and to the audience what Mr. Hess's involvement was with LexiPol?
Sure. When I made this comment after, after John Hess's report to council, I had mentioned that we were looking at LexiPol and Mr. Hess felt compelled to let the council know that he had involvement with LexiPol on the correction side only, that he had nothing to do with law enforcement. He wrote policy and he helped write policy for corrections. And that's because that was his background as a corrections person coming up through the jail side of the sheriff's department there in Kent County. I did not know. I, I know that the council did not know this. And he, he, he need not have said anything, but he felt, you know, to be as transparent as possible that you needed to know that, even though it really has no impact whatsoever on what I had recommended.
And if, if I may elaborate, just to be very clear, Mr. Hess was a contract employee of LexiPol. He did his job, he got compensated. He doesn't make an additional dime if Celine chooses to participate or if Celine doesn't choose to participate.
That is my understanding.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Additional comments? Mr. Gierbach, please.
One of the reasons why I'm supporting this is from my own practice too, and understanding the policies and developing all that. But from our approach, I would rather see the chief spending more time on balancing the fairness and actual policy adherence than having to spend time writing it and interpreting it and diet, and developing it. Because part of the practice, is, issue is the practice and the actual application of a policy that needs to be monitored. And that's what we wanted to have happen. I think that's where the confusion has happened in the past, and that's where I'd rather see him spending the efforts. These items, as long as they're being updated and then having the subscription, takes away that need to do that. Because you can spend hundreds of hours on doing policies and we aren't going to get a benefit out of it. We'd rather have people being sure that our police officers are practicing what we preach and what we expect of them, and that it is being adhered to. And when we have problems, we have something to point back to. And I think this is what's going to achieve that.
Good. Additional comments? Well, let me just say this in, in closing. My, my sentiments mirror that of Councilwoman Tahr and Councilmember Gierbach. I'm cognizant of the fact that there are many ways to update and revise policy. My commitment is to make sure that it gets done. And I think that LexiPol is, has a pretty outstanding reputation of helping police departments update and manage their, their policy manuals. I also should note, and the chief was, was quite articulate on this in the past, that LexiPol employs a team of professional experts to revet and view these, these policies. So again, we're able to access a number of different perspectives and expertise in drafting and revising our, our policies. It's also been noted, and I think it was perhaps the most compelling recommendation in Mr. Hess's report, is that our policy manual must be updated, it must be accurate, it must be modern, it must reflect the, the current trends in, in police departments. And I think it's absolutely critical. I'm also not unmoved by the comments of our police chief and, and attorney, but also those of my colleague, Councilman Seo, who spent more than 40 years in law enforcement. So I think this is a step in the right direction. I'll be supporting this motion. The only thing I would ask, unless there is objection from the Deas chief, you may be coming back to us sooner with updates, but at a minimum, I'd like to see an update after six months, which would put us at September 2016. Just to see, obviously, we're not going to be completed with the process by then, but see how things are being integrated, see what individual officers, dispatcher and, dispatchers, excuse me, and employee personnel think about it, specifically the training videos. And I'd also be interested after six months in getting legal counsel's opinion as well.
Mayor, I believe we have a quarterly update that we're expected anyway, so I would just include it as part of that.
You want to comment on that?
No, I didn't hear the question.
A quarterly update?
There was something that as we were putting in progress report in general after we had talked initially back in January, that the chief would come to us on a quarterly process.
Right. Right, and I don't have a problem with you putting in the quarterly report. I would like something a little bit more comprehensive, maybe a presentation at the beginning of a council meeting, maybe first or second meeting in September, if you think that's doable?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And to answer the quarterly one, within three months, I at least have information that I can share with council, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, very good. Anything further on this? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It has been properly moved by Councilman CEO, seconded by Councilwoman Tahr, to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-68. This is 2016 Summer Music Series Additional Night. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 19th, 2016 memo from Celine Main Street President Jill Durnan, and to approve or not to approve the request by Celine Main Street to add Thursday night, August 11th, 2016, to the Celine Music Series, and to waive or not to waive any additional fees.
Move to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to waive.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. I believe we have, oh yeah, Jill, Ms. Durn, you're here, as well as Riley, our Main Street Director. Do either one of you or both of you, would you care to comment on this?
I can.
Okay. It's pretty self-explanatory, but if you wanted to add anything, we would welcome that.
Just as an explanation to the council, it was just, when we inherited this event from the city in 2012, it was just, we never had a concert the Thursday before Summer Fest. So we finally asked the question, why? And the businesses were in favor of it, and we also ran it by the Summer Fest team, and they were in, in favor of it as well. So I appreciate the time, and we think it adds to the consistency of the event, and then it also, especially during construction season this year, we want to keep people coming downtown as much as possible.
Well, people are always disappointed when it ends, so if you can prolong the length, I think that's a good thing. Thank you, Jill. What questions do we have for our applicant? Any questions? No? Jill, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any discussion? Mr. Gierba?
As we've already identified, this is part of our budget that we have waived fees for this and for the Summer Festival. I see no problem with this extension. It's already been waived.
Very good. Anything else? No? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Mayor Portem Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman McClellan, to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to waive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business item 16-69, Rotary Cemetery Tour at Oakwood Cemetery. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Celine Rotary Chair Ginger Winter, and to approve or not to approve the request by the Celine Rotary to have a cemetery tour in Oakwood Cemetery on Saturday, October 8th, 2016, with Sunday, October 9th, 2016, as a rain date, and to waive or not to waive the fees.
Move to acknowledge, approve and not waive.
It's been moved by Gierba to acknowledge, to approve and not to waive. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahr. I believe, yeah, Ginger, you're here, do you want to comment on this? We would welcome, any thoughts?
Well, I went to both Plymouth and Northville, as I heard the other community mention previously, to research, and I thought this would be a wonderful way for the community to support Rotary, which also is nonprofit, and we try to get money to use in very good ways in the community. And some of our resources have been cut back, and so we're looking for new ways to make money. And this is something that we thought would be helpful for the community. We want to involve history teachers and other history people. Bob Lane has been very supportive and is a part of our committee, and we are really enjoying it. I saw 1866 up there. Some of the people we are researching right now are before then. So just think it's going to be a really good event, and we hope it will be ongoing.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comments. Why don't you stay put in the event that we have some questions, if you wouldn't mind? Are there any questions for the applicant?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate you doing this, and I think it will tie in nicely with our Sesquicentennial tours that will be happening that month as well, so I appreciate your work.
Very good. Any additional questions? Ginger, thank you very much. Any subsequent discussion on this motion? No? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Councilwoman Tahr, to acknowledge receipt, to approve and not to waive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business item 16-70. This is Celine Fair Parade Route Change. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 2nd, 2016 memo from the Celine Fair Board Director, Leslie Drake, and to approve or not to approve the request to change the Celine Parade Route and to waive or not to waive any additional fees.
Move to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to waive.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahr. A number of people from the, the Fair Board here this evening, who would like to speak?
I'm Leslie Drake, Celine Fair Board Director and Chairman of the Celine Fair Parade for many years. We brought back the parade to the city limits last year and was received very well, and would like to do the same thing this year, but last year, we started in Hennifield and ended in Milpon Park. Because it was our 80th year, we did some old-time games down there afterwards. This year, we'd like to reverse it and stage at Milpon Park in the parking lot and end up at Hennifield. We won't be having any old-time games. However, there is, I don't know if anybody saw it last year, the old-time baseball team played in Milpon Park. They have let us know that they would be willing to do another game if we wanted them to, possibly in Hennifield.
Questions for our applicant? No? Okay. Dave, Mr. Rhodes?
Not, not a question, but a, but a comment. I wanted to explain why I moved to approve this and to waive the fees, because any changes in the fees will be well within the dollar amount that we had previously waived, because they applied as part of the overall application for community events. Thank you.
Additional comments? The only thing that I would note, and perhaps I can get with you or Councilwoman Dillon or somebody else from the Sesquicentennial Task Force, but that group has talked about an old-fashioned baseball game.
Okay.
And so there might be some opportunity for collaboration on that.
Perfect.
So we'll make sure it's mentioned at the next meeting and then maybe get in touch with you or whomever you deem appropriate.
Yep, absolutely, yep.
Okay? Excellent. Yes, Ms. Tahr?
And on that same topic, I, I heard a rumor, unverified, that Summer Fest organizers are also talking about old-time baseball.
I believe, that may have been mentioned in our last Sesquicentennial Task Force. Do you recall that, Ms. Dillon?
I'm sorry, the Summer Fest?
Yeah. Do you remember somebody mentioning something about that?
I just remember we discussed doing old-time baseball.
Okay.
Without tying it to Summer Fest.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So we'll be in touch. Thank you. Appreciate it, Leslie. Any additional discussion on this motion? No? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Tahr, to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to waive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-71. This is Court and Law Enforcement Management, excuse me, Information System Clemis. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 16th memo from Police Chief Rennick, and to approve or not to approve the renewal of software and computer-aided dispatch software in the amount of $3,604.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gierba, seconded by Councilman CEO. Chief Rennick, do you want to comment on your memo of March the 16th?
Yes, just that we've been a member of Clemis for many, many years, and this is a continuation of the maintenance agreement for the software, and it is the same price as last year. The price has not gone up, which is amazing in the economy. They do a very nice job for us. Anytime there is ever an issue, it is fixed immediately. I certainly have no problems with Clemis as our maintenance person for this.
Very good. Questions for Chief Rennick? That was easy, thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you.
Any discussion on this? Mr. CEO, please.
Just to say that I was, again, involved in the police administration when Clemis first came to Washtenaw County. One of the additional advantages it has is not only for the Celine Police Department, but it's a common system among all police agencies except for the University of Michigan throughout Washtenaw County. And so it has the advantage of, if, say we had a fire here in this, in this building, God forbid, or some other reason, practical reason, that we had to leave our dispatch center, any of our dispatchers could go to any other dispatch center in Washtenaw County and log onto the system, onto this Clemis system, and continue to dispatch from there, having switched the telephones over and having logged into Clemis with their own user, username and password, and continue to dispatch just as if they're right here at, on Harris Street in Celine. So there's a lot of advantages. The department, again, does not have to spend all of its time, and I did that as, as part of my job in, in Ann Arbor Police Department. Reviewing various software vendors and so on, and trying to ascertain which one is best. Clemis provides the management service, they provide the software, they do all the vetting of the vendors, and it may not be absolutely perfect for everything that we would like, but it certainly is a wonderful compromise, and we're relieved of the management burden of all of that software and all of that responsibility, and we have the duplicative benefit of being able to go anywhere in Washtenaw County and perform our dispatch functions.
Very good. Thank you for those comments, Councilman. Any additional discussion? No? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by CEO, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-72, Connection Study Proposal. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 16th memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve Tetra Tech's proposal in the estimated amount of $14,000 for professional engineering services for water and sewer connection study. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
It's been moved by Mayor Portem Rhodes to acknowledge receipt and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Well, here we go again. Mr. Brian Rubel and Mr. Gary Rubel, would either one of you or both care to make a comment at this time?
Just to highlight some of the items in the staff cover letter, the current water connection charge system, which is the chart on page two, shows what the connection rates are for various size meters from residential all the way up to large industrial. The last change was made in 2006. We know what happened with the economy after that. Growth slowed down, plus we were not in a mode that we are in now as far as infrastructure studies and challenges and improvements. So going down to some of the bullet points in the Tetra Tech Consulting Services, you'll know there's, I just want to point out five bullet points that are sort of catalysts that brought us, brought us to this point, one being that we're, you know, in the budget mode right now, and so we're considering the revenue, anticipated revenues that we need to offset anticipated expenses. So what provides us with the impetus to do this, plus the knowledge that Tetra Tech has accumulated in the past few years and projects, projects are working on now, is the fact that we've completed the design and we know the costs involved with Phase One and Two of the wastewater plant. Those go into the connection rate study as far as, those are capital costs and asset management costs. And then the, the water and sewer studies that were performed, not only for Annalina Farms, but for a couple of our site development projects, including Lieber. And so the knowledge gained there shows us what the current state is of our facilities and what expansion needs are anticipated, so we have those costs to, to use in the study. And then Tetra Tech has currently performed the water reliability study, which means they're going to take some of that data and combine it with our current system needs and some future needs for future projects for programming in the budget. And then also the fact that we are now qualified for the SAW grant award, hopefully in October, and Tetra Tech has provided the work plan and the cost estimates that go into that as far as us getting equipment and 90% refund, of course, on that and accumulating that asset management data they're going to put together for a program. So we have a culmination of things here that point to the fact that now is the time to complete the long-awaited connection rate study and then also be in compliance with the bold decision.
Very good. Mr. Brian Rubel, do you care to comment at all or make any additional comments right up?
I didn't have any prepared remarks. I'd be happy to answer questions, but I, I will say that Mr. Cooper Wasser from my office would lead this project. He has really specialized in rate studies, connection fees for better part of 40 years, so I, I know you're in good hands with this.
He does excellent work, there's no doubt about it. Thank you. Questions for our guests from Tetra Tech or for our city engineer? Mr. Rhodes, please.
Comment if I could.
Please.
For the benefit of those in the audience and those watching us on television, while your names are pronounced the same, they are in fact spelled differently, and you are not related to each other.
It's part of the, no, that's correct.
Any questions? No questions, thank you, gentlemen. I'll actually stay, hang tight, because you're, you're up again at the next, for the next motion. Any additional discussion? Mr. Gierba, please.
Just a comment, I've had individuals make concerns about what our connection fees are for our, adding another meter just to whatever is an existing water system or something like that. So it will be interesting to understand exactly how we're going to be charging this forward so we can explain ourselves, because in some cases, I think the fee seemed extravagant, but there is a reason why we charge that fee, so having the clarity of that again, I think will benefit us.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments?
I'd just say our, our fees are many times less than the city of Ann Arbor connection fees.
From my knowledge of Ann Arbor's fees, you, you are very much below theirs.
Correct.
If there's nothing further, it's been properly moved by Mayor Portem Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The last action item of the evening is new business item 14-134. This is wastewater treatment plant improvements, Phase Two Pay Estimate Number Seven. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 16th, 2016 memo from Tetra Tech, and to approve or not to approve the contractor's application for payment number seven in the amount of $15,089.41.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilman CEO. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Again, Mr. Gary Rubel or Mr. Brian Rubel?
I believe he deferred to me, so.
Please.
Just, just to give you an update, the, the contractor has been on a little winter hiatus here for a few months, but they have been continuing with paperwork. Quite, quite a bit of paperwork with the construction project, submittals and materials and reviews and returns, and, and so that has been continuing. They anticipate starting again right around April 1st, and so with this pay application is to assist them with the paperwork that has been occurring in the last month or so. So I, I think they have things in pretty good shape so that when April 1st comes, we'll get that wrapped up by midsummer.
Very good. Would you care to make any additional comment?
No.
No? Okay, very good. Questions for either our city engineer or for Brian Rubel from Tetra Tech? No questions? That was easy enough. Any discussion? No discussion? Well, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by CEO, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is Commission, Committee and Task Force reports from council members. Ms. Dillon, please.
Okay. I want to report out on the Celine Community Substance Abuse Coalition, formerly the Drug Task Force. We met last Thursday, and we've got a pretty aggressive schedule going right now. We are in the process of planning a live, I guess you would call it, presentation featuring John U. Bacon and William Hagerup. It's going to be held Wednesday, April 20th, at the Celine High School. All high school students will be in attendance, but the public is also invited to attend. It's free of charge, and its topic is relationships and choices and how they impact our lives and the impacts of substance abuse. And the coalition is also currently evaluating whether we will be hiring a coordinator to oversee the coalition. That's still under advisement and review. And I think that's about it.
Very good. I should note, too, that that program that Councilwoman Dillon referenced is advertised and promoted in the upcoming FYI newsletter. And again, it is absolutely free. Every high school student will be in attendance, but the school staff is encouraging adults to, to attend and participate, and details involving that presentation, again, are enumerated in the upcoming FYI newsletter, so please be looking for it. Additional Committee, Commission and Task Force reports. Let's go first to Councilwoman McClellan and then Mayor Portem Rhodes.
Yeah, just a quick announcement that the Parks Commission Arbor Day is coming up on April 29th. The time is still to be determined, but I believe Teff Park is where that's going to be happening, so.
Very good. When you, no additional details, please, please let us know. Mayor Portem Rhodes?
Yes, thank you. I was not able to attend the last Environmental Commission meeting, but the staff representative, Connie DeHaan, did her exemplary job of passing on information to me about what they had talked about. There were two presentations, one from Rex Clary, who's the Director of Facilities for the schools, and he spoke about their continuing efforts to improve recycling of materials within the school district, and they are part of a larger group now. We're doing a study at Heritage School to quantify the amount of recycling that happens there and move it forward. Last year, we did a, the environmental commission participated with them at Pleasant Ridge on a Zero Waste Day for their cafeteria, and that was successful. Then the other presentation was from Katie Witczek. The county has an organization, and I don't have the total name with me, but it's Clean Streams and some other things, and it's what Waste Not used to be, has morphed into this new program, which includes the, all the things that Waste Not did before with the physical recycling, and has now added in the Clean Streams, which has to do with storm drains and such. And then the commission continues to develop more public service announcements for showing on Channel eighteen, and also continuing to fine-tune the electronic waste recycling event, which will happen on April the thirtieth. That's a Saturday, the last Saturday in April, from nine to three in the parking lot here at City Hall, as it has the last couple of years. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Additional committee, commissioner, task force reports. No how about reports or other announcements? Mr. Seale, please.
Again, just a reminder that next week, we're going to have the MDOT presentation about the Michigan Avenue detour. I believe that's on the twenty-ninth.
Correct, at Liberty School, beginning at five P.M. Strongly encourage public participation and attendance.
Yep, it's an important meeting, and people don't know what's going to happen to this town when MDOT starts tearing up the roadway. So, if you want to find out how best to traverse the city during the time, it might behoove you to go to the meeting if you can.
Indeed. Thank you, sir. Anything else? Mr. Rhodes?
Yeah, and on a personal basis, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the community for the outpouring of condolences and other forms of sympathy on the passing of my wife, Leslie Niedheimer. It was great. Thank you. She was an amazing person.
Indeed she was, Mayor Protem. Our sympathies to you. She'll be greatly missed. If there are no additional reports or announcements, I guess not, we will proceed then to the strategic plan. That was, my note was distributed at the last meeting, an additional copy may have been placed in your packet. Mr. Campbell, remind me of what sort of feedback you're looking for tonight, if anyone had questions, concerns, confusion with anything that was on that document. I guess we'll just open it up like that, unless you want to add anything. I don't really want to go through it item by item, line by line, but if you had questions and concerns, be happy to entertain those. People are in pretty good shape overall, Mr. Girbaugh.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the one item on Objective Five, which we had need to clarify, non-motorized project plan. I think Ms. Scruggs helped to have through that question tonight, which is the grant.
Yeah.
So, I think we can insert that in there as part of that.
Which page is that again, Mr. Girbaugh?
Uh, page three.
Page three. You see that there?
Objective number five.
Consider that done. Anything else? Well, again, if you do have comments, something comes to you, please feel free to call or email. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, please.
So, on the first page, Rule One, Objective Two, expand the perceived downtown area. Says incentivize West Side Business Association, have functions to bring residents to the West Side. So, staff's question for elaboration is, need to define or identify what is meant by the incentivize? Wanted to make sure I understood that.
I don't know, and it's obviously a decision that needs to be made by the majority of council. As I think about that, I don't know if incentivize is the right word.
Yeah, I would say that it's probably something more about if we decide to do kinds of developments or something down there, how the city could contribute towards any kind of redevelopment or so forth down there. Not necessarily an incentive, but more of a cooperation, similar to what we've done uptown and when any other development occurs.
I like contribute, cooperation, be cognizant of their needs.
Encourage.
Encourage. Okay? You got direction on that?
So, contribute, encourage. Was it, uh, to Mayor, you had? Collaborate.
Collaborate.
Yeah, I know, I'll pick. Okay, thank you. And then, yeah, page two, Mayor, this is, I guess, meant towards you, so apologize for that, but promote health, and Objective Two, promote health of the community, health and wellness needs. I put education. And I just want to see, I just ask, this were your community meetings, is that right?
Yeah, and actually, that's something I think she's already exited for the evening, but Ms. Scruggs and I talked about briefly today, because there's some examples that I'm looking at of other communities throughout the United States where the city government spearheaded, although they didn't do it alone, but they spearheaded some initiatives to promote healthy living and healthy lifestyles. And so, that's something I'd like to potentially model and mirror locally.
And again, the grant assists with this, too.
It does. Yep, it does.
So, but an overall question of education and helping for healthier lifestyle.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
That's it? Okay. Well, again, if you have additional thoughts, comments, please feel free to direct them to the city manager. If there's nothing further to be brought up under the discussion portion of our agenda, we move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, and my concerns are South Harris Street as far as, and I've put six dollars and some odd cents in pictures. It appears a U-Haul truck for the last three weeks, and then there by Mr. Phillips. It has been moved today, but with US twelve opening up, I am requesting that there between South Harris and Henry, that there be no parking. It is definitely dangerous. This U-Haul truck was by a residential driveway, of which the person doesn't like to get involved publicly, but there's no way you can get out of your driveway. It is a humongous, I've heard everything over the last three weeks that it needed parts. Well, it's not to be stored on the street if it's needing parts. There are other things I'd like to, I talked to the, if you could kind of share these. Apparently, I tried the ordinance officer, and he said that this would be up to the police chief. I gave a copy to the police chief, because he said that this would go under the Mr. Ruble, because it's zoning, and it has to do with concerns. Mr. Campbell's been gracious to say that he would meet with me in the next couple of weeks or whatever, when we have time, but it is very dangerous. And eventually, between, you know, South Harris, that's only one block, and you have all kinds of things coming out of Speedway. Speedway, today, they had a truck parked in front of the store, not this way, Longway, a truck. It's crazy, and I'm asking that the council and the safety director, as far as the highway and safety, please look at possibly closing it earlier than anticipated. It is a, it's a collector's street, and it, if you notice and go down that way or whatever, it really is hard. Thank you for your kindness.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional citizen comments?
Family dispute here. I think there's enough for everyone.
If not, Mary, we can make copies and make sure everyone gets one.
Thank you. I have more.
Okay.
I think it's quite fitting that I give you the annual report from the Historical Society tonight, after recognizing Wayne as one of our members. You'll see he's still listed as a member of the Board of the Historical Society, so I'll let you read this for yourself. It's the annual report from the Historical Society, and it celebrates another year of cooperation between the Historical Society and the city, and the maintaining and functioning of our two museums, so. I always do like to highlight the number of volunteer hours, five thousand six hundred and seventy from our, that number comes from Agnes Steichman, our faithful record keeper. And she, of course, there are lots of us who forget or neglect to mention the hours that would, so you can imagine that there were probably at least six or seven thousand hours of volunteer activity going on on behalf of the Historical Society and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate your work on this. And please extend our thanks to your colleagues on the Board of the Historic Society as well. Additional comments? Oh, please, Christina.
Hi, Christina Laronas. I live at one fifty-one East Textile Road, Ann Arbor. I'm in Pittsfield Township, and a number of us had come to actually see the work session, and we had such a variety of times that I missed it, and some people saw part of it. But we'd come, those of us that are parents of young adults with disabilities in the Celine community, we'd come to support the project for six hundred North Main that's being presented as Maple Oaks. I understand that it's going to, this will be then the final item on your agenda at your next city council meeting?
I'm going to try and get consensus on how to move forward and which proposal we prefer at our next meeting, at the end of the discussion portion of the agenda on April the fourth.
So, would it be appropriate for us to come to that meeting and speak at the beginning if we want to offer support for it?
We would be delighted.
And should we also just submit letters in advance?
If you'd like to do that.
Okay. A group of the, of parents has been working diligently on this for quite some time, meeting regularly, regularly and dedicatedly on this particular topic. The architect that selected is superb, Mr. Polley. He was the architect that we selected in Pittsfield Township on one of our parks, so it's a particularly attractive development. The developer is obviously skillful in this type of development, and for those of us that have young adults with disabilities, this is just such a unique opportunity. It's such a beautiful location. It's across from the heart of Celine, our district library, such a familiar place to so many of our kids, where they're comfortable, safe, and I think it being close to the high school and being close to the new care facility that's just up the street, I think that this section of town is just going to be uniquely and particularly supportive for our young adults that have disabilities. So, this is a parcel that we've been looking at for quite some time, others more so than me. I get the notes from Patty Raby, who does such a wonderful job with all of this. So, we do hope that you'll consider it. I realize that you have a duty to sell the property at the appropriate price, but this, I think, would be something that would add to the character of Celine, to the city of Celine, and it upholds the values of the city of Celine. I grew up here. My daughter has just absolutely thrived here, and we feel so safe and comfortable here that our children are known if ever they are lost a little bit. People always recognize them. It's like a safety net for them. I think, I just think this would be such a great location for them, so we hope that you'll take that under consideration as you look at the different proposals. Nothing against the others. Mr. Berry, lovely person, Livonia Builders, he's working at the old Houghton School site, perfectly reputable builder, but a typical subdivision, so we think that this would add something special. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Additional citizen comments? Please.
My name is Jeff O'Meara, and I'm from Celine, sixty-nine eighty-eight Noble Road, just outside of the city limits, but I just want to echo some of the comments that were just made here. I don't know if I could really add a whole lot to what she's already said and said so well, but I, being a parent of a special education student who's not yet a young adult, but very quickly approaching that point in his life, you know, it's really difficult to find a, any kind of housing or any kind of facility like this or development that's being proposed here, and I think it's, I just want to just echo her comments, too, about how well-suited and how well-located it would be to have something this unique and that special in this community. I think it would go a long way to really kind of say, you know, send a message to the town and the people that, you know, that having this type of thing and this opportunity for these young adults and special adults would, I think, would be a real asset to the city and to its, I've lost words here, citizens, I guess. So, and just wanted to, I guess, certainly echo the comments and say that I'll be, you know, turning in a letter, you know, that type of thing, too, to, and try to rally support, too, if that helps persuade your, the council's decision here shortly, so. Anyway, just appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional citizen comments? Well, again, just a note for the audience's benefit as well as my colleagues on the dais, the issue in the sale of six hundred Maple will be discussed as a discussion item on the fourth. I hope to develop consensus at that time. Anyone who is interested in this issue is encouraged and welcome to write us, to email us, to attend that meeting, and I will note that because it is an agenda item, you'll have the opportunity to speak to the issue at both the beginning and end of the meeting. So, again, that will be on the agenda for April fourth, which is our next meeting, and I believe that's two weeks away. Are there any other citizen comments? Is there any other business to come before Celine City Council? If not, we have no motions or no absences to excuse. I would note our future meetings are on the fourth and the eighteenth, with work meetings beginning at six P.M. on both dates to discuss our upcoming budget. And if there's nothing further, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at nine oh four P.M.
So, moved.
Moved by Councilmember Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.